Good morning, welcome to the Board of Supervisors for the November 1st, 2011 Board of Supervisors meeting. Roberta, would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Bennett.
Here.
Supervisor Zaragoza.
Here.
Supervisor Long.
Here.
Supervisor Foye.
Here.
And Supervisor Parks.
Here. And unfortunately, our individual who's going to do the Moment of Inspiration broke her foot, so we will not be having that this morning. Wish the best, and we'll have it at a later time. At this time then, let's go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance. Supervisor Long, would you like to lead us?
Thank you. Hand over heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion to adopt the minutes of October 18th. We're asking for a continuance to the November 8th.
Come on.
Okay, we have a motion from Supervisor Long and a second from Supervisors Zaragoza. Please vote. And we'll go now to our agenda review, and this is to look at any potential changes in our agenda, and I'll turn it over to Mr. CEO.
Thank you, Chair Parks. Pleased to report this morning, no changes to the agenda.
Okay. All right. And we'll... We have a motion to accept the agenda with no revisions. Please vote. I also remind you to turn off your cellphones, particularly if they're loud. And we'll now go to our consent agenda, or rather, yes, consent agenda items. It's items 10 through 13. We have a motion from Supervisor Long and a second from Supervisor Zaragoza, and we can vote again.
No, you can't. We're going so fast. Do a verbal, please. Everybody say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
That's my job.
I just said everybody aye. Opposed?
Okay, the consent items, 10 through 13, pass unanimously. And our next item is public comments.
No cards.
Going once, going twice. Public comments is over, and we'll go to board comments. We'll start with Supervisor Foye.
Thank you very much. I'd like to adjourn a member of people on this list. Just a couple of comments. Royal High School, out in Simi, one of the largest high schools, and the Presidential Foundation are doing a Combined Leadership Institute, something they're putting together to bring kids from all over to train them on leadership and do this. I thought it was kind of an interesting thing that the library is really going after this in the user discovery center. If anybody hasn't been at the discovery center over there, talks about taking kids through a whole understanding of what happened down in Grenada, and how they make decisions, and somebody's the president, somebody's the chief of staff, and it's just really a neat thing, so it was great to see that happening. Also, talk a little bit about what's kind of been going on in the state in regards to Governor put out his 12-point pension reform, and I thought it was interesting. He put out some pretty good points on some things. I think he's starting down the right path on some great things, but the hardest part was that as soon as we heard that come out, we heard a lot of the labor unions and everybody else who are dealing with this, having to deal with these issues, say, "We're not interested." That's too bad, because we do need, everybody understands, we've got to make some changes, and I appreciate the Governor willing to put some things out and do that, but we have to get everybody on board to do it before we get into trouble, as we're seeing, again, what's happened to Greece and all the other things that are going on. These are the issues that we're talking about, are some of these long-term pensions, and I appreciate the Governor doing it. We can make changes early that will help us long-term. The longer we wait, the harder it's going to get. My comments, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Long?
Yes, thank you. Just to tag on to that, I think as we are here at the local level, certainly reviewing our own pension responsibilities, I agree with that. I think, as anything, the Governor put it out as a starting point, and I think good people, good minds should come together and look at all those points, and see which ones work, and start the negotiations. If not, it will be done by initiative, and government by initiative does not serve us well. So, there's my editorial comment. One quick, two things. Actually, not much, because the legislative session is everyone in the district, so they're not up there in Sacramento doing a lot of mischief, but locally, we have coming up every year, November 16th, I'll start early with this one, the Trivia Challenge hosted by the Rotary Club of Ventura South. And the reason we talk about this at the board, because it benefits our Reed Ventura County Library, our adult literacy program. So it's, again, Ventura South, they're looking for three-person teams, it's the trivia challenge, it's at the Wedgewood, it's on November 16th, a Wednesday at 6:00 p.m., for those of you who'd like to put a team together. And then I have adjourned memories, and I'd like to call out two of them. One in Santa Paula, Hope Esperanza Dearing, she's my chief of staff, Martine's mother-in-law, she passed away. An amazing woman, highly admired art illustrator, traveler, writer, amazing storyteller, scout master, and just incredible woman. Lived a long, healthy life, and she just recently passed away. So certainly, our thoughts and hearts go out to Martine and his family. And then for, in Camarillo, Brent Delane Johnson, graduated from Fresno State University with a degree in criminology, joined our Ventura County Sheriff's Department, where he served as an officer and a detective, and unfortunately passed away at too young of an age, and I know it was much loved and appreciated by all of his fellow men and women officers in the deputy sheriff's office, so out to the entire team, our condolences. And with that...
Thank you. Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yeah, I'd like to adjourn in memory of this list and these individuals. And, over the weekend, on Friday, we, my staff and I, attended the, an excellent presentation by our CEO, Mike Powers, over at Chen Laney's University, explaining the operations of the county. And one of the things that I think came out of this meeting, he did an excellent job, by the way, too, is that, and I mentioned this to Michael, that I think that the public gets more of our, the things that we're doing, more information on what we're doing, because we're doing so many things, you know, with a $2 billion budget and the, what is it, 27 agencies that we have, and I think we need to get out and really share with the folks what we're doing, and so, I think you did an excellent job, and I want to commend you for that. Additionally, after that, we went over to the Jolly Oyster at San Buenaventura State Beach Park, that had champagne and oysters. I didn't have any champagne in it, but then, that oyster's...
I have some oysters.
It was a fundraiser for McGrath. It says, "If you mention Ranger Jolly sent me, part of your donation will go towards the helping McGrath State Park." So we went over, and Lourdes and I attended right after your presentation, so that was great. So I went and donated, no champagne. Looked great, but didn't have any.
Been thinking about it ever since.
Can't let it go. And also, during the same time, my chief of staff, Stan Hayes, went and took your grant opening, Supervisor Parks, I understand, you have a beautiful office in Thousand Oaks. And also, on Saturday morning, or, no, that Friday evening, Lourdes went and attended the Leaders Campesinas, this is Women Farm Workers Leaders of California, they held a march individual to raise awareness of domestic violence in the Colonia. October, you know, was the Raise Awareness Month, you know, against domestic violence, and she represented my office, and she did it very well, you know, the Ventura Star highlighted the event, Ochsart March highlights plight on women, and, you know, after the marches and, at the march, there was poems and prayers and proclamations issued on behalf of Ochsart, Mayor Tom Holden, and myself, John Zaragoza from the 5th District. But I just wanted to share what Lourdes said, and I think was important, if you read the paper, you probably, I'm going to quote her, and quote to start here. Lourdes, on behalf of Zaragoza, said, "The women who marched Friday night should be commended for their bravery. Culturally, and this is should be underlined, it's unacceptable, because they are supposed to be in home, this is their women," she said. For them to say, "This is our time," says a lot for these women, and their strength comes from the community, and I appreciate that the leaders, or the leaders of women, Campesinas, can help bring their strength to women who didn't feel they had that strength." End of quote. So that was, you know, kind of nice for her to share that on behalf of the women, and I support it 100%, you know, because, especially in some of the Mestaco communities, the abuse is horrific, you know, so. So she went out and shared this information, so I think it's appropriate, and I want to thank the Star for sharing that in the VC, highlighting the plight of women in Ochsart and the county for that matter, and the country for that matter, but I just wanted to share that, that she did that. And those are the end of my comments.
Thank you. Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you very much. I had the pleasure of attending the AIDS Walk this year, and helping to kick that off, and what was particularly significant about it is the Rainbow Alliance organization has collapsed, and so the question was, would there be a good AIDS Walk? And it was picked up, and we really need, it became really apparent, see how many young people were there that didn't experience the AIDS crisis when it first came, and the whole issue of continuous education on this issue of AIDS is really critical, and I think that that point really came out, that we have to do a much better job of that. So I just hope that we at the county level will redouble our efforts and try to make sure that this next generation gets properly informed, because that's, talk about an insidious disease, it's been very difficult, and now is, you know, spread through, you know, every population segment that we have. The second thing is, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Samuel Heel on this list, a former Ventura City Council member, but most sadly, some of you may have known him, I'm sure Supervisor Parks does, I think maybe Supervisor Long, but Nick Williams, and I know Mike knows Nick Williams, right? We lost Nick Williams two days ago, and I just want to talk about Nick Williams for a couple of minutes. We lost Nick at the age of 98. You guys in the East County appreciate knowing, at one point in time, Nick owned 50 homes in Thousand Oaks. He was in some kind of real estate, whatever, but for a while, he owned 50 homes, but he spent, from the time that I met him, about 20 years ago, Nick lived in a trailer about the size of the Clerks Space right down here. He had, next to no money, just living off of Social Security, and what Nick would do is he would find some charity that needed his help, and he would go out and paint houses and turn all the money over. He usually painted houses and made about $20,000 a year, and he lived on a Social Security check, and he turned the whole $20,000 over to various charities. On a per capita basis, Nick Williams was the most generous person in Ventura County, I am certain. I mean, nobody turned over, you know, a greater percentage of their income. You talk about loved, I mean, people, and he was a, he had a great zest for life, he kept himself happy, he wore, he'd go to thrift stores and buy plaid jackets and pinstripe shorts and natty hat, and that's what he'd wear to some fancy event, and, you know, he walked in and he was, he was just a joy. And I have to tell you, Nick's Christmas card that he sent out, now, he died at 98, but the Christmas card that he sent out at 95 is now being circulated around amongst his friends, and it was this Christmas card, it was just, "What does Nick Williams want for Christmas?" And then there's a picture of Nick, and then below it, it says, "A hot woman." And just the fact, just the fact that at 95, he was, he was willing to, you know, willing to bring joy into your life. He, every summer, went back to Chautauquas, back in New York, and was loved back there by a whole group of people that met with him. And what a, a real giant in Ventura County we lost with Nick Williams. And what happened with Nick was, he got gangrene in both of his feet from poor circulation, had his feet amputated, and he refused to get out of bed after that, and just, you know, he just felt like this was the time for him to kiss a goodbye, so it was tough to watch him waste away in bed for the last nine months, and had a sad, sad loss, but a joyful life to celebrate. We're going to talk more about those Christmas cards than we are about the last nine months of his life and stuff, I'm sure, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry to hear about Nick. Thank you for letting us know.
He was at the Hagman fundraiser. We introduced him as one of the special people, if you remember.
Since we didn't have our Moment of Inspiration, I actually have a letter here that was written to the great crew over at the fire station that assisted a man in Hidden Valley, and it says, "To the men who responded to an emergency call on 9/17/11, man with chest pains in Hidden Valley, I am deeply grateful for the care you gave to my husband, Mark, on the day of his heart attack. If it hadn't been for your quick response time, your knowledge, your experience, and the compassionate care you gave Mark, it is likely he would not be with us today. Minutes mattered in this situation, and you were all instrumental in giving him the care and treatment he needed to save his life. Mark and I were high school sweethearts and have been happily married for 28 years. He is the absolute love of my life, my best friend. Losing him would have been devastating, not only to me, but our three children as well." And they've enclosed a picture of the family that was taken just a few weeks before his heart attack. "Thank you, just doesn't feel adequate, I know it is a little cliche, but in my mind, you are heroes. Thanks, thank you for everything." And you see that this is just one day for a firefighter, but it means the life for an entire family, and it's nice to read that, and thank you for sharing, Chief Roper. Also, I was able to attend with Supervisor Long, who was found to be a hero for the people who need housing in our county by the Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation for their 30th year anniversary back on Friday, so that was nice, and congratulations to you and some other wonderful people who were so recognized. Also was able to attend the Santa Monica Mountains Trails Council, their annual dinner, and just, these people volunteer their time, their resources, their money, and also for 30 years have been out there making sure that trails could be taken care of, and instead of relying on our state parks, which have no money to do it now, they've become a really important feature for people who like to get out on the trails, and so wishing them a happy anniversary, too. So, today, I guess on Monday, the United Nations marked the world population reaching 7 billion, and also what is today in history is All Saints Day, the day honors and recognizes all the saints. And also today is National Family Literacy Day, celebrated across the United States and focused on special activities that showcase the importance of family literacy program, and I'm sure you're like I was, go to the library and come home with like 20 books, and that was every night, it was a lot of fun, and now they're in college. And hopefully, they're still reading. On this day in history, in 1512, the ceiling of the Sistine Chapel in Rome, one of Italian artists, Michelangelo's finest works, is exhibited to the public for the first time, and in 1800, US President John Adams became the first president to live in the White House when he moved to stay there, so. And the rest is history. So, that concludes my board comments. I don't have any adjourned memories, fortunately, and I'll go now to, I guess at this time, we can go to our regular agenda, and we'll begin with our item 21, which is ratification with our healthcare agency of some contracts, and Ms. Roy.
Good morning, Chairman Parks, members of the board, and Mr. Powers. Melanie Roy from the Behavioral Health Department. Item 21 requests your ratification and approval of a number of treatment contracts related to AB 109, which of course you know is the Public Safety Realignment Act. In California, we know that 42% of the inmates have a high need for alcohol and drug treatment, and 56% have a high need for drug treatment, and only about 17% of those have had some form of treatment while in state custody. So we understand that about 80% of the individuals that will be released to our county will have some form of treatment needs. If we are able to engage 50% of those in treatment, we know that about 200 individuals coming to our county will be requiring the mandatory alcohol and drug treatment that we're going to be associating with AB 109. Given the severity of the criminality of this population and their treatment needs, we expect that they will be accessing drug treatment services across our continuum, and to accommodate that, I am proposing the following contracts. For alternative action programs, we are requesting a contract, nine-month contract of $250,237. That contract will provide alcohol treatment services to this population, outpatient services. For Keppra House, we are requesting an increase in their contract, and for the remaining nine months of fiscal year 1112, at the amount of $57,240, and again, that will be for residential treatment for this population. We are also requesting a contract with prototypes, and this will be an expansion increase of the contract for fiscal year 1112. The request is for $22,680. We're also adding $4,674 in Ventura County Medical Resource Foundation carryover funds that can be utilized through June 30th, and that would be treatment services for females. We're also requesting detox services from Tarzana Treatment Centers, and that amount is projected to be approximately $21,000 annually, and $15,750 for this fiscal year. And those services would again be provided for what we project to be approximately 200 individuals coming to our county who will need alcohol and drug services across that continuum. For mental health services, we're proposing to contract with Telecare Corporation. They currently run the program that we have had a lot of success with in collaboration with the sheriff, related to individuals being released from the county jail, and making sure that those individuals are connected to treatment. Telecare also, we had a pilot program for a number of counties with this exact population, the parolee population, and had significant success in reducing recidivism. So during the first year, we're looking for low-intensity services and high-intensity services. The high-intensity services will be wraparound-type services, so they'll be available 24/7, 365 days a year for the most seriously mentally ill inmates, or released individuals, and then the lower-intensity services will be mainly med management and case management. During the first year, we're proposing to serve approximately 54 clients, 20 of whom will receive high-intensity services, and 34 will receive the lower-intensity services. The contract amount for the nine-month contract for this fiscal year will be $380,905, and the annual cost for that would be approximately $694,000. And again, we're working very closely with the other partners involved in the coalition to assure that individuals who are coming to our county, the goal being that they receive the services that they need to reduce people recidivating back into the jails, and to avoid overcrowding in our county jail. So, do you have any questions?
Supervisor Foye?
So we're saying that before, in upstate prison, they didn't get a lot of these services. I mean, we know that there's not a lot going on.
Right.
So what do you, how successful have we been in our own jails with what's gone on? I mean, are we hopefully going to see some real good success with this? Are you optimistic, or is this through, going through the steps?
Well, I'm always optimistic.
I know you are.
With the Telecare program, for instance, they did the pilot program with the counties, I think it was San Bernardino, LA, and I think it may have been San Diego, and they were able to show significant reductions in recidivism. The population normally recidivates in the 70%, so they were able to significantly reduce that. So we would expect, hopefully, the same kind of outcomes locally, it's the same contract provider, they've got a lot of experience working with this population. I think that the collaboration we have with the sheriff also is going to be significant. We have processes in place whereby we're able to do warm handoffs, we have an individual who's placed in the jail right now, who does help us identify people who have mental health and alcohol and drug issues, so that we can get them to the appropriate level of care. These folks are going to be coming into our county, they normally would have been served by the parole offices, the parole mental health offices, and alcohol and drug services, I'm not sure that they ever got those. So, this is a new population for us, and, but we have experience working with this population. We run the Conrep program, and that's a similar population that has criminal histories and very significant mental health needs. I've got staff within my department who have high levels of expertise dealing with people with these kinds of issues, and criminal histories, and with the collaborations with law enforcement, I think we've got a very good shot at doing a very good job in this county.
Great, okay, good.
I have a couple of questions also. One is money for detox. I would think that people who have been in jail have gone through detox the hard way, or whatever, because they're in jail. So why do you see the need for that service when they get out of jail?
It's not necessarily the case that people haven't been using in jail.
In the, particularly state prison system?
Or in the prison, yeah.
So you may have prisoners that are using in custody?
Sure. That's true. And as we develop, and as we work the program, we're going to be having people who come to us, we're going to be evaluating them at the front door, and determining what level of care they need. As we develop the program, and as the program goes, you know, through the months that we work with these individuals, we will have people who begin using again. So what we need to make sure is that we have a good continuum of care to treat individuals at whatever level they need. But it won't be necessarily that people will be clean and sober when they come back to the county.
I guess I'm naive, but I'd be interested in seeing how prevalent that is, because I would think of an addict needs to get his fix on a regular basis, that it just doesn't seem like prison would be an easy place to do that, but I might be wrong. As you say... seem like prison would be an easy place to do that, but I might be wrong, as you say. Okay. Then another question I have is in regards to the, this new element that's going to be, I guess, integrated with those who already have mental illness that we're assisting or Telecare is assisting, other programs are assisting. Is there any concern about the combining of offenders with mental illness with folks that are not and how that will affect those who are not offenders with mental illness?
What we're proposing right now is our separate programs. Telecare will be running their program at a separate location. I don't anticipate right now that we're going to have a blending of these populations. And as we learn and understand the population better, I think we can then make decisions related to the future and how we will manage them, but right now the programs will be separate.
Thank you.
Both the alcohol, drug and the mental health programs.
And then finally, will we be tracing, tracking the outcomes, you know, how, what the reduction in recidivism is, for example, the people who have been able to become housed and working and we're going to follow those and how, how often are you anticipating getting back to the board with these figures?
I was going to say Jeff, do you want to make a comment here too? Because I know that we have, we have a collaboration going right now related to blending and working together in the collection of data and with our IT systems. And I don't know, do you have, I think you're my main partner in this.
Hi, good morning. Apologize for my voice, little overzealous at a football game this weekend to no avail of the score. Actually, what we'll have above the state is we are tracking these individuals. Now, what qualifies as success hasn't been defined, but we'll actually have the facts about, they went through one of Mel's programs and this is what happened. And we'll actually have some quantifiable data that tells us what programs might work better than others. So actually, I'm pretty excited, Telecare has a great history with us and unfortunately Supervisor Parks, a lot of them do come out of the state prison with habits still continuing. And for a lot of them, the day they get out, their only goal is to go fix again. So sadly detox is an important criteria of the continuum, as was mentioned.
I'm shocked at that. And the timeframe in which you will be coming back with some of the outcomes, like on a half-year basis or how do you see that? Have you figured it out?
I imagine the CCP will be coming back as a whole partnership and keeping the board upraised and we'll do as often as you'd like, but I would say, you know, give us six months and get, you know, a population built up and some experience when we can come back and get, you know, let you know what's going on.
And it is wonderful that you'll be tracking it that closely, that you'll be able to see which programs are working and what we can do better, so. And I also appreciate the collaboration very much. With that, could we please?
Sheriff, just if I could ask, we talk about him coming out of the state system, still addicted. To what extent are we much more successful than that at the county system in terms of keeping the drugs out?
Well, on our local program, the one we modeled with Behavioral Health, have been very, very successful. It's, you see, you know, for mental health, when a parolee gets released now, if they need mental health issues, one of the three parole officers that may be around in our county refers them, there's very little follow-up. The wraparound programs that Ms. Roy is talking about is following those people all the time. And if you couple that with probation, will be so much more involved. I don't want to make a projection on what our success level would be, but I think like I said in the board before, I will guarantee we'll do better than they're doing.
And how about just in our county jail and drug use in our county jail so that people are addicted? We feel like we've been able to.
We have some drugs in our county jails, but very, very little, it's a whole different issue. The detox issue, because you're in state prison for twenty years, thirty years, historically up until now, we've only had people for a year. So we tend to detox and we can follow them much more closely and there's less chance of contraband getting into jail facility. And we, I can't say a hundred percent for sure, but I don't think we have any contraband cellphones and the state prison has tens of thousands of them. So, but we have people, we catch drugs inside our jail every other week probably that somebody has smuggled in.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Powers?
Just real quick, Chair Parks, on the outcomes, I think, of course, it's important to track those just in general, to know that, but also as we've seen with other pilot programs like this with the state funding, will often follow the positive outcomes in those programs. Yet another reason to do it. And this whole plan has been approved embedded in Mel's plan here by the CCP, so it's great collaboration.
And yeah, and as the report says, they have the programs that we're using, Telecare particularly has seen seventy-two percent decrease in hospital days and thirty percent decrease in return to custody. And so there definitely some positive outcomes, number of homeless days decreased seventy-eight percent just by providing these services. So that makes our community safer and again, appreciate the collaboration. We do have a motion from Supervisor Long, do we have a second? Second from Supervisor Bennett, we could all please vote? Thank you, that passes.
Thank you.
And our next regular agenda item is item twenty-two. And again, this is on our Sheriff's Department, electronic monitoring.
Madam Chair, Board Members, Mr. Powers, Jeff Dean, Sheriff. Letter before you asks for authorization, which is required under the penal code for the board to approve, the sheriff to have an electronic monitoring program. We haven't had one historically. Probation, you approved probation a couple of years ago to start a program, it was kind of based on trying to reduce jail population. We'll be taking over that aspect of the program, there's only eight people in it right now. And this program is somewhat of a precursor based on realignment, then in the future our jails will be full and it will be unlikely we can afford to build a new jail and staff a new jail. And I will be required to release people and electronic monitoring will be one of the options. We've sought throughout the entire country, looking at protocols that are used. Ours is actually much more restrictive than what's in place right now. Some questions have arisen for involving people with restraining orders and other violent crimes, why didn't we put those in an automatically exclude criteria? And while our policy will be very conservative and very restrictive, we didn't want to put verbiage in there that would automatically exclude these people. Just because you have a restraining order issued against you doesn't mean that you might not, it might not be appropriate for you to be on electronic monitoring. Oftentimes in cases, a restraining order is issued and within two or three days, an entire situation changes and that person, it might be appropriate for that person to be released and fit into that criteria. Trust me, if anything happens with any of these people out in the community, I can tell you where the public and certainly the media is going to look because I author, my, my deputies authorize their release. So we will be very careful and very conservative in what we do and how we approach this process. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Those are the, what we call the non-non-non individuals?
I'm sorry?
The non-non-non individuals, and use that to you. The non-violent non.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear the question, what about?
Those the individuals that are going to be eligible for monitoring?
Well, some of them will be eligible, but I would imagine it's those that we currently have in our system as we triage because the non-non-nons are actually more serious offenders normally would have gone to state prison. So we'll have probably somebody that might have been selling low levels of narcotics, some minor thefts, burglaries that are in our system now that may qualify. And some of the non-non-nons may or may not qualify based on the triage, wanting to only release those that are the least threat to our communities.
Are they going to be monitored or let go?
The other thing that'll change is right now probation uses what's called an electronic fence program. And if the person goes outside that fence when they're notified, our system will be a full GPS tracking program. So we'll be able to track everybody where they are twenty-four hours a day.
Is that monitored out of the Todd or out of here?
It'll be in an office in the main jail. Actually, we'll contract it out to a company and we'll be on twenty-four hour notification and have access to that information.
Great.
Supervisor Foy?
Thank you. One of the things I had asked you before was in regards to your asking for new officers to do this, was using non-sworn and you're, you said that there's some other reasons. And what you talked about is they're out, you get an instant call, I got to go arrest somebody or do something, I guess they have to have police powers?
Yeah, part of the electronic monitoring program will be actually going out and checking on these individuals. And we need sworn police officers that obviously have, carry weapons or are trained when they go out dealing with these people.
Right, yeah. Some people say it'd be cheaper if you didn't have that, but there's other reasons why you would want to make sure that they were sworn.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, okay, great.
And as you say, it is left to your discretion on, on some of these, you've decided those that are going to be excluded from the program completely, no matter what. And I noticed, for example, one is that they're under the potential of having a third strike. But sometimes I would imagine those aren't necessarily violent behaviors, maybe perhaps more in the drug realm, I don't know, but compared to some that are then given the discretionary decision, while those are excluded if you're going to have a third strike, it does allow for some discretion on ones, for example, that as you mentioned, domestic violence or violence or criminal behavior. Every case, I guess, is different and it is up to you, but I was just wondering about that, that issue where one completely excluded who may not necessarily be a threat to safety as much as one that has exhibited violent behavior or had guns.
Well, it's like you said, every, excuse me, every case is different and we strongly believe that anybody that's been arrested for domestic violence and maintains any type of threat to their victim or the public, if we can keep them in custody, we're going to keep them in custody. There's interesting studies going on around the country and the model shows, and we don't, I don't necessarily agree with all of it, but the model shows those people in the middle range are less likely to reoffend than some of the lower-level offenders. It's a pretty interesting criteria and I think we'll, we'll learn as we go. But people that have two serious strikes, probably if you have two convicted strikes, it's less likely you're going to get released out of the community because you are a danger to the community. And I know there are stories about, you know, a twenty-five dollar theft charge, but if you have two strikes, you're probably a danger to the community.
And definitely exhibiting criminal behavior. How, how will it be determined? Are you going to have a panel or yourself or who will make the decisions on the discretionary ones?
We, well, we'll have the unit, the full-time officers that are doing that will do that. And then we'll have a captain that will review all the releases before they go out. Trust me, I'm really nervous about this. And there's three people, there's just pre-release people that probation are dealing with now that the court says, okay, you can do that. And then you have people that are in custody that are unsentenced, once they serve, if you're a misdemeanor, you serve thirty days, if you're a felon, you serve sixty days, then the sheriff has the authority to release. So those people also fit the criteria. And then people that are sentenced, I actually have the authority to release on electronic monitoring. And so the, the unit will review it, a captain will review it for me and I have to trust Captain Solis right now that she's going to, you know, look closely and make sure the community is safe and we're all protected.
And definitely it will reduce the strain on resources to be able to do the electronic monitoring. And I was thinking also, sometimes we're forced to release some prisoners earlier and so this may also give that option that while they're being released a little earlier because they, you feel that that's okay to do, you can also, I would imagine, send them with electronic monitoring.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, well, best of luck and you'll keep us up to date on this one too, right?
Yeah, there's no good answer here.
No.
There just isn't and it's new and it's something new for everybody all over the place.
But it does come down to who we end up putting on the electronic monitoring for the success of the program, so I.
Yes.
Trust your judgment and I wish you best on it. Our opportunity to vote here, we have a motion from Supervisor Zaragoza, second from Supervisor Foy, if we could please vote.
Just a comment, no quick, Chair Parks, as I may, just to come in and share, if you won't say it, but I think our department is sort of a pioneer in this area, one of the first counties to do it. So it's good that we're getting out ahead of it early and not having to deal with it after the fact when there's been overcrowding, so.
Mm-hmm. Be able to really master it.
Let's hope.
Yes. Our, our motion passed on a four-zero with Supervisor Bennett stepping out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is our correspondence agenda. And this is on the unfortunate correspondence about layoffs from Amgen that are required to be noticed. We have a motion for Supervisor Foy, second from Supervisor Zaragoza, if we could please vote. I know we have programs with the Workforce Investment Board and others that can help provide services to corporations, companies that have to do layoffs. And that passes on a four-zero. And this gives us a chance before our time certain, which is in ten minutes, to take a break. Does that sound good? We'll take a short break and be back here at nine-thirty.
.91, because it is not going to be at that level or anywhere near it in the future because interest rates are low and a lot of the securities that we had, high yielding after two and three years, are running off. And if you're looking at two-year securities now, they're at .43. If you're looking at three-year securities, the highest yielding thing I can buy, .72. So I would say, if someone asked me with the approximate 549 million more that's coming in the first installment, when all this comes in and settles, I would think that our yield would be about .5 to .6. And actually, that's not that bad. I was talking to Lape this morning, I'll be up visiting them Friday on a due diligence visit. Always want to see what they're doing and how they do it. And they're currently at .38. So there's just not a lot out there. We all see it when we go to the bank, we see the CD rates, the savings rates. We know the Fed is 100% in the next two days not going to raise rates. I don't go out any further than a year, and there is no prognostication for an increase in rates. Everything they're doing is to keep rates down and hopefully to continue this slow growth for the whole economy. So with that said, really what I wanted to say was that basically we will be looking at lower rates. But one thing also, this is a time that a lot of people, I've noticed over years, try to reach for extra yield or try to do a little more adventurous investing, and sometimes that ends up getting in trouble. Also, we have this excellent credit rating, as high as you can get. We have a low volatility rating, as high as you can get. So if anyone were ever to ask about our earnings, we are staying within the three-tier system that we have in the investment policy, which is credit, marketability, and then rate third. And like I said, in the past, I've seen people try to reach a little bit more to get yield, especially in these times, and we are not planning on doing anything like that. We're just going to stay the course, and it is what it is. Because I know I've told you many times what Orange County's board went through under Bob Citron, and they had brought supervisors down at midnight to start counting the money. You know, we just want to stay away from all that stuff. Now, that's an exaggerated example, but it did happen. So with that.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yeah, Bob, you know, I just read in your second paragraph, you said it so well, is that the portfolio has been managed with a stated objective of safety, liquidity, and earning in a competitive rate of return that align in the statement regarding our policy. So I think you're doing really great, you know, to get .91% is excellent compared to the other rates that are floating around at .38 or...
And it's going to go down. That's why I want everybody to remember this as the good old days, but 659 was, I was even smarter in those days.
I was just talking, I was talking to our CEO earlier, or yesterday. Can you remember the six-point something and the five-point something rate? If we had that now, it'd be fantastic. But even at .93, we're earning $1.3 million a year in interest, which is excellent, I think. And then the other thing, too, that you have here is the, to receive the highest rating that AAAF by Standard and Poor's is extremely important. And then also the S1+, you know, for our cash, is very, very important ratings, too.
You know, one thing about being a living dinosaur, and there's a sign outside of my office that says Jurassic Park, but I remember the oil embargo and poor President Carter, when interest rates went to the moon and two-year notes were 20%.
Unbelievable.
Thirty-year bonds were 14%.
But the mortgage rates were all to 18 and 19%.
Oh, they were, oh, yeah. You're right, nobody was selling any houses.
Well, I sold some, but remember with the idea that they can lower their rates in the future, you know, so.
Right. But anyway, we will, we will be back, rates will go back up. They never stay the same, that's one thing.
I guess right now the markets are taking a hit because of Greece deciding to put it to a referendum, their austerity plan, and concerns of the volatility of that and the effect on the EU and how that will then affect the world markets, so.
There's always something going on in the world, and Greece is the latest hotspot and the latest subject.
So while we can't do much regarding our interest rates, basically looking at length of investments.
Pardon me?
You're looking at the length of time of investments is kind of about the only thing that we can really have any sway on in terms of return.
Right, and the thing that, we are a very conservative county. We most, under the code, we could go five years. We cut it down to three years so we don't have that long exposure. The other thing, under the code, there's no limit other than five years for your average maturity. We cut it down to 375 days. That's what gives us the low volatility and the high rating there. So you can't have your cake and eat it, too. But we have a portfolio that credit-wise and liquidity-wise, I could sell the whole thing anytime I need to.
And you know, let me share something. When we went to New York, you know, with the Standard and Poor's with their CEO and CFO, that's what we heard, that our good credit rating, good policy, policies that we have, financial policies and budget policies, gave us a high rating, and with your expertise, you know, that really helped us tremendously.
And I think that, you know, even though we might capture another 20 basis points or something, I still think the public and all of you that are elected, the most important thing is that, you know, we have the credit, we have the liquidity, and then the rate.
That's important.
And that's really what the public wants.
And to the board members and according to the Standard and Poor's, our county's probably one of the best-run counties in California, according to this individual. She says if the state of California was running like we, then we would have it made. I've heard those comments up in Standard and Poor's in New York.
They offered me a job, and Marie said, I'm going to leave Hope Ranch to go to Sacramento. Nothing against Sacramento.
Thank you.
We knew you were smarter than that.
Thank you. We do have a motion, as I understand, from Supervisor Foye, second from Supervisor Zaragoza. And this is to receive and file or discuss and file. So we did discuss it, and we're now filing it. And the motion passes four-zero.
And let me be the first on behalf of our staff in our department, because we won't be back till December, to wish all of you a happy Thanksgiving.
Same to you.
Thank you very much. All right, all right, shall we move on to our next item, then? This is our 9:45 time certain, and this is a presentation for the Ventura County Commission for Women. And Ms. Lee Regan is here, one of the better cupcake makers that you'll find in the East County. Thank you for bringing cupcakes to our open house, Lee.
Thank you. I know a better place where I can buy them and not have to bake them. Honorable supervisors and county staff, it is a pleasure to be here. We've brought a PowerPoint presentation to give you today. And if you, also, each of you are receiving a copy of the PowerPoint presentation, a little report on the three-woman pin, and you each receive a copy of the pin.
And then after your PowerPoint, I have something for you.
The report that you're receiving now is for the 2010-2011 presentation. Several of our board members, I mean, several of our commissioners cannot be here because of deaths in their families, or they have prior commitments in the community. In particular, Aina Howard is volunteering at a school in Oxnard, and Jan Lawrence just lost her young nephew.
Well, thank you.
And Deborah Bagley, who was the chair of 2010-2011, helped to prepare this report, and there was a death in her family, and she is unable to be here today. So if we may, this is the PowerPoint presentation. I'm hoping I know what to do. These are our commissioners. We served last year and this year, and we anticipate great involvement in this coming year. This, in July, was our birthday for 2011, July 14. This is our mission, to encourage, support, and facilitate the empowerment and education of women in Ventura County, and to coordinate efforts with federal, state, and local community groups to improve the quality of life for women and their families. These are the activities that we've been involved with, the development of the website. And these are additional activities that we have been involved with in some outstanding projects led by other women's organizations.
Investing and sometimes that ends up getting in trouble. Also, we have this excellent credit rating as high as you can get. We have a low volatility rating as high as you can get. So if anyone were ever to ask about our earnings, we are staying within the three-tiered system that we have in the investment policy, which is credit, marketability, and then rate third. And like I said, in the past, I've seen people try to reach a little bit more to get yield, especially in these times, and we are not planning on doing anything like that. We're just going to stay the course and it is what it is. Because I know I've told you many times what Orange County's Board went through under Bob Citron, and they had brought supervisors down at midnight to start counting the money. You know, we just want to stay away from all that stuff. Now, that's an exaggerated example, but it did happen. So with that...
Madam Chair.
Yes, President.
Yeah, Bob, you know, I just read in your second paragraph, you said it so well, is that the portfolio has been managed with a stated objective of safety, liquidity, and earning and a competitive rate of return that align in the statement regarding our policy. So I think you're doing really great, you know, to get .91% is excellent compared to the other rates that are floating around at .38 or...
And it's going to go down. That's why I want everybody to remember this as the good old days, but 659 was, I was even smarter in those days.
I was just talking, I was talking to our CEO earlier, or yesterday. Can you remember the six-point something and the five-point something rates? If we had that now, it'd be fantastic, but even at .93, we're earning $1.3 million a year in interest, which is excellent, I think. And then the other thing, too, that you have here is the, our, to receive the highest rating, the AAAF by Standard and Poor's is extremely important. And then also the S1+, you know, for our cash, is very, very important ratings, too.
You know, one thing about being a living dinosaur, and there's a sign outside of my office that says Jurassic Park, but I remember the oil embargo and poor President Carter, when interest rates went to the moon and two-year notes were 20%.
Unbelievable.
Thirty-year bonds were 14%.
But the mortgage rates were all to 18 and 19%.
Oh, they were, no, yeah. You're right. Nobody was selling any houses.
Well, I sold some, but remember with the, with the idea that they can lower their rates in the future, you know, so.
Right. But anyway, we will, we will be back. Rates will, will go back up. They never stay the same, that's one thing.
I guess right now the markets are taking a hit because of Greece deciding to put it to a referendum, their austerity plan, and concerns of the volatility of that and the effect on the EU and how that will then affect the world markets, so.
There's always something going on in the world, and Greece is the latest hotspot and the latest subject.
So while we can't do much regarding our interest rates, basically looking at length of, length of investments.
Pardon me?
You're looking at the length of time of investments is kind of about the only thing that we can, you really have any sway on in terms of return.
Right, and, and the thing that, we are a very conservative county. We most, under the code, we could go five years. We cut it down to three years so we don't have that long exposure. The other thing, under the code, there's no limit other than five years for your average maturity. We cut it down to 375 days. That's what gives us the low volatility and the high rating there. So you can't have your cake and eat it too, but we have a portfolio that credit-wise and liquidity-wise, I could sell the whole thing anytime I need to.
And you know, let me share something. When we went to New York, you know, with Standard and Poor's with their CEO and CFO, that's what we heard, that our good credit rating, good policy, policies that we have, financial policies and budget policies, gave us a high rating and with your expertise, you know, that really helped us tremendously.
And I think that, you know, even though we might capture another 20 basis points or something, I still think the public and all of you that are elected, the most important thing is that, you know, we have the credit, we have the liquidity, and then the rate.
That's important.
And that's, that's really what the public wants.
And to the board members and according to the Standard and Poor's, our county's probably one of the best-run counties in California, according to, to this individual. She says if the state of California was running like we, then we would have it made. I've heard those comments up in Standard and Poor's in New York.
They offered me a job and Marie said, "I'm going to leave Hope Ranch to go to Sacramento." Nothing against Sacramento.
Thank you. We knew you were smarter than that.
Thank you. We do have a motion, as I understand, from Supervisor Foye, second from Supervisor Zaragoza, and this is to receive and file or discuss and file. So we did discuss it and we're now filing it, and the motion passes 4-0.
And let me be the first on behalf of our staff and our department, because we won't be back till December, to wish all of you a happy Thanksgiving.
Same to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, all right. Shall we move on to our, our next item then? This is our 9:45 Time Certain, and this is a presentation for the Ventura County Commission for Women, and Ms. Lee Regan is here, one of the better cupcake makers that you'll find in the East County. Thank you for bringing cupcakes to our open house, Lee.
Thank you. I know a better place where I can buy them and not have to bake them. Honorable Supervisors and County Staff, it is a pleasure to be here. We've brought a PowerPoint presentation to give you today, and if you, also, each of you are receiving a copy of the PowerPoint presentation, a little report on the three-woman pin, and you each receive a copy of the pin.
And then after your PowerPoint, I have something for you.
The report that you're receiving now is for the 2010-2011 presentation. Several of our board members, I mean several of our commissioners cannot be here because of deaths in their families, or they have prior commitments in the community. In particular, Ina Howard is volunteering at a school in Oxnard, and Jan Lawrence just lost her young nephew.
Well, thank you.
And Deborah Bagley, who was the Chair of 2010-2011, helped to prepare this report, and there was a death in her family, and she is unable to be here today. So if we may, this is the PowerPoint presentation. I'm hoping I know what to do. These are our commissioners. We served last year and this year, and we anticipate great involvement in this coming This in Jen, in July was our birthday for 2011, July 14. This is our mission to encourage, support, and facilitate the empowerment and education of women in Ventura County, and to coordinate efforts with federal, state, and local community groups to improve the quality of life for women and their families. These are the activities that we've been involved with, the development of the website. And these are additional activities that we have been involved with in some outstanding projects led by other women's organizations in Ventura County. The California Shared Prosperity Forum, led by CAWS, we submitted a grant to the Women's Legacy Fund for Domestic Violence Awareness and Education, participated in Your Right for Your Rights Reproductive Rights Network, the California Women's State Appointment Project, and support of establishing an American Women's History Museum in our nation's capital. I was honored by the Ventura County Commission, Community Action, proclamation received from the Board of Supervisors honoring the California Women's Suffrage Centennial, the AAUW Rally for the Vote, which was fabulous, the Ventura County Reproductive Rights Network 38th Anniversary of Roe versus Wade, the 100th Anniversary of the Right of the International Women's Day, the rally at Plaza Park, Oxnard, Secretary of Labor's National Dialogue on Workplace Flexibility in Pasadena, and the proclamation by the Ventura County Board of Supervisors on Women's History Month. Commissioner Shontae Morgan-Durassu and VC CW honored at Cal State University Channel Islands Women's Recognition Luncheon, participation in Ventura County Women's Forum Collaborative Organizing for Empowerment. This is the beginning kickoff for 2011-2012, as it was accomplished in 2011. Collaboration with the California Lutheran University Multicultural Office, and I misspoke. This is Delta Sigma Theta Sorority to Screen the Black Sorority Project, The Exodus, a film about the group of black women's participation during the suffrage movements, and our commissioner facilitated the discussion. This is it. This is a big project that we have that began in 2011, and we hope to complete it in 2012. This is the status of women and girls in Ventura County. We released the first component of that report. The research was done through the partnership with the California State University Channel Islands in Camarillo by four sociology students who have now graduated, and we hope to have them involved in this coming year. We are examining the status of women politically, economically, health, and well-being. These are organizations that our members belong to or participate in their activities, and I've included that in your copy of the PowerPoint presentation. One of the things we wanted to remind you, I'm sure you are all aware of the budget cuts, and in 1981, the Board of Supervisors directed that the Commission for Women establish a relationship with the State Commission on the Status of Women, and in that regard, presented here, presented their policy statement on the budget cut. And this is their policy statement, that when the economy experiences a downturn and the state faces a budget deficit, essential safety net programs are targeted for cuts with women and children on the, as the primary victims. Adequate funding of the state's health and human service programs that primarily serve women, including CalWorks, Medi-Cal, childcare services, domestic violence services, in-home supportive services, and SSISSP is critical. Low-income women and their families would be put at significant risk without these vital resources. Increased state revenues are needed to protect these programs and balance the budget without disproportionately harming women. We've included in your package a copy of the, these words and the policies that they are recommending. These issues are impacted by the budget cut, childcare, civil rights, economic security, education, employment, family law, long-term care and aging, reproductive health, violence, women and girls in the criminal justice system, and women veterans. The need for the Ventura County Commission for Women and its focus is great. Today, we're celebrating the 30th anniversary, and we want to express our appreciation to you, the Board of Supervisors, Steve Bennett, Linda Parks, Kathy Long, Peter Foye, and John Zaragoza. Thank you for celebrating with us the 30th anniversary of the Commission for Women. And we want to thank the 16, those original supporters, the original organizations, who supported the establishment of the Commission for Women. Thanks to the Board of Supervisors of 1981, Susan Lacy, Ed Jones, Maggie Erickson, Jim Doherty, and John Flynn, and to the first commissioners. There are over 100 people who applied to be on this commission. We want that back. And first, an appreciation to the Ventura County Women's Equity Coalition and its Chair, Jenny Connell, the basis of the original request to establish the Commission for Women in 1981. Our sincere appreciation. Thank you, and please, if there are any questions, I have my backup supporters here. Jenny, come up here. This is Jenny Connell. We owe much to.
It's a pleasure to be here this morning, and a pleasure to celebrate 30 years. At that time, we were smarting from the loss of the amendment, the Equal Rights Amendment, but determined that we were going to find a way to keep working for women's equal rights, and here we are.
Boy, what, it seems like it should have been a lot longer than 30 years ago when we were fighting that, but I, I have a proclamation, and I think it'd be appropriate to give to both of you. Let me come on down and present it.
Madam Chair, while you go down, I'd like to thank you for an excellent presentation and, and to all the women that are helping us out with the Commission of Women and for the excellent work that you do for, for the county. I want to thank you for...
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
I'd like to suggest that all board members go down. 30 years, we need a...
Okay.
I'll go ahead and read the, the resolution that we have honoring the Ventura County Commission for Women on their 30th anniversary. Whereas upon recommendation by the Ventura County Women's Equity Coalition and supported by 16 women's organizations and individuals, the Ventura County Commission for Women was established by the Ventura County Board of Supervisors on July 14, 1981, as a channel through which individuals and the many women's organizations in Ventura County could report to the Board as well as serve in an advisory capacity on conditions affecting the lives of women. And whereas the Commission for Women studies conditions demonstrating discrimination due to sex or marital status provides a coordinating, a coordinating function with respect to the many community groups working to improve the quality of life for women, and performs work assigned by the Board of Supervisors. And whereas the formation, supporters of the Commission for Women included, and this are many different organizations, which will take me a good 10 minutes to read, but it's, it's really to your credit that you have reached out and connected with so many. And whereas individuals to be recognized on this 30th anniversary who have contributed to the development of the Commission for Women include Jenny Connell, Bonnie Warrington, Cecilia Fargo, Lori Zeranopoulos, Steve Willman, Yvonne Bodel, Carol Kuchekian, Maggie Erickson, Susan Lacy, Jean Getchel, Lynn Alfonso, Lee Anderson, Judy Wong, Elaine Freeman, Priscilla Partridge Rankin, Diana Goodrow, Jan Lawrence, Ina Howard, and Joanne Lafield, more. And there are a lot of names that we recognize. Whereas the Commission for Women has taken on the task of identifying existing childcare resources and developing a county-wide childcare resource network, creating county-wide awareness of women's issues through the Salute to Women Awards, Quality Childcare Month, and Women's History Month, and most recently with a county-wide survey featuring the status of women and girls in Ventura County. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in honoring the Ventura County Commission for Women on occasion of its 30th anniversary, wishes its many more years as a leading organization with hundreds of people applying in the community for encouraging, supporting, and facilitating the empowerment and education of women, and I'll congratulate the Chair, the former Chair, and all you ladies. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We're young.
Thank you very much.
Well, I guess we...
Thank you very much.
Come on over here and we'll take our picture. We have to stand like that over there.
Thank you, John. I wanted to show that to you.
We'll try.
I'll take two. Oh, you want to take a photo and I'll send it to you.
We need you.
Okay. I'll take two pictures. This one at the count of three. Ready? One, two, three. Let's take one there. One, two, three. Oh, let me take it one more time. Someone moved. Okay, one more time. One, two, three. Perfect.
We do need a receive and file for that presentation, so if we could have a motion, Supervisor Zaragoza, second by Kathy Long, Supervisor Long, if we could please vote. We'll move on to our 10:00 AM Time Certain, and this is a second hearing on the adoption of an ordinance regarding our civil service system. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Parks, members of the Board, Mr. Powers, Kelly Shirck, County Executive Office, Human Resources Division. You basically took my whole presentation right there.
That one sentence did it all.
In one sentence. It's to place the Chief Deputy Director Healthcare Agency into the unclassified service, and upon approval for the recommended action, the ordinance will go into effect on December 11, 2011. Be happy to answer any questions.
Comments, questions, or we have a motion from Supervisor Zaragoza and a second from Supervisor Long. Please vote. Thank you. Sorry to take your steam away there. Will that be a supervisor, all supervisors vote on that one? Supervisor Bennett? Thank you. That one was a 5-0. And our next item is Item 17, and this is a presentation on our county's fiscal year first quarter update of our budget. And Mr. Dursey is going to be taking this one, I believe, with an intro from Mr. Powers? Or Vice President?
Whatever your name is. All right. Thank you, Chair Parks, and board members. Happy we're doing this today after Halloween, so hopefully it won't be too scary. But we wanted to, one of the things that we pledged to your board was to give you regular updates about where we are with our budget. So this is our first quarterly budget, and that's just a quick reminder that we do address budget issues almost weekly at your board meeting when we make adjustments to it, and we're also going to give you these quarterly updates. Good news is, we're still structurally balanced and we are maintaining service levels. One of the things that we're going to talk about today is a little bit of long-range planning, so not just one or two years, but looking out five years, some economic impacts. State issues, we'll go over the trigger cuts that we're potentially facing, and then of course, touch on retirement contributions, which is our main cost driver. But I wanted to just start off with, you know, that's a, that's a nice general statement that we remain structurally balanced and are maintaining services, but it doesn't do justice to the work that the managers and the workforce here are doing to keep it that way. And it takes a lot, a lot of daily work, and so just to give you a quick snapshot, you can see, just in looking at our Lean Sigma program since 2008, there have been over 400 different projects, events, so-called, and the total savings from those is about $8.2 million. So I just really want to commend our, our management team and our workforce for helping us.
And a lot of those savings continue year, year to year?
Exactly, Chair Parks. That's right. It's not just one year. It's, it's in our structural budget savings. And then you can see about 402 events. Just to give you a couple of samples, in Public Works and Watershed Protection, they're going to save about $600,000 a year, and this is directly related to a Lean program where they're cleaning out debris basins, and one of the experienced staff there noted, well, you know, maybe we don't have to clean them out to the same degree and still be as effective. And just that one change alone is going to save $600,000 a year. Smaller things like eliminating, you know, 21,000 boxes of expired documents by HSA, that saves $233,000. I won't go through the whole list, but you can see for yourself there, all the efforts going on in just about every county department to reduce costs all the time. And now, I will turn it over to Mr. Dursey to go over state trigger reductions.
I think what we'll do is we'll start with the state issues, and we'll try to give a little bit of background on how they impact the county or whether they're going to impact the county. You kind of touched on the overall trigger reductions, give you a summary of what we see, the trigger reductions based on our analysis and the information we're getting. Well, it's based on the initial budget document that the state adopted, but the Director of Finance will develop this in, in December. The Director of Finance will combine with LAO's November forecast, and they'll combine those and make a projection on the rest of the year and determine whether or not they feel like there needs to be trigger cuts. If the higher forecast, if the budget, the budget revenues are off by a billion dollars, $601 million in trigger cuts hit beginning January 1st of 2012. So if they're a billion dollars off, they hit $601 million of trigger cuts, and those $601 million of trigger cuts are listed there. You see $100 million to the University of California, CSU, and then CCC is the community colleges, California Community Colleges. Then Development Services, Department of Social Services, IHSS, 20% across-the-board reductions in hours. That, what that will do locally is, is under the, under the theory that that actually would save us money because we would be paying less for our share of IHSS services. However, from a recipient's standpoint, it clearly would reduce the number of hours that those recipients would get under that scenario. $100 million, about 20% cut across the board from the state standpoint. So that's a significant relative to recipient level. So that's significant relative to recipient level. The C72 million, a lot of these are not, I mean, they look like nickel and dimes, but they ended up adding up to 100, you know, $601 million. The majority of it is really within the education at the higher level, higher-level education, CSUs and UCs. But as you get down, you see the DA Vertical Prosecution Grants, $15 million. Again, those are statewide dollars, so our share will be trickling down. Roughly speaking, we're about 2% of the state. So it would affect our DA Vertical Prosecution. Vertical Prosecution means they, my understanding is they start with one attorney that tracks that prosecution throughout the whole process. So they don't have a review team. So it's, from their standpoint, a more effective way to prosecute certain things. But those are grants coming from the state, and those are eliminated, you know, according to board policy. Once the grants go, the program goes away. Medi-Cal extends provider cuts and copayments to Medi-Cal Managed Care Plans. And the DHS, IHSS, eliminating anti-fraud grants, that would also impact our district attorney's office as far as fraud, their fraud grants. Now, we get to the next level of trigger cuts. That's if they're off by a billion dollars, if they're off by $2 billion, an additional $1.86 billion in trigger cuts. So you see, add 1.86 to the 601, so you're upwards of almost $2.5 billion of cuts that the state will impact. They would impact beginning February 1st of 2012. Majority of it is right there at the $1.5 billion K through 12 education, and their plan would be eliminate seven days of school. That's their initial thought on that. $248 million in Department of Education eliminates funding for the home-to-school transportation program, and another $72 million of the California Community Colleges. So almost all of that is education-related. Now, how that actually trickles down, or actually gets implemented, you know, we're yet to see. I think a couple, the last two bullet points there is that, year-to-date, we see the state revenue is down, is $654 million less than projected in the budget. So if they're a quarter of the way through, we would expect their budget, if you just, you know, push that out for the full year, they would be off by the $2 billion. However, these triggers aren't based on actuals, but they're based on what the LAO and the Department of Finance determine will be numbers going forward in December. So if the economy turns around and everything's looking really rosy and all that good stuff, then the $654 million is a non-issue relative to that's passed. So they're looking, they're trying to make a projection of what they see for revenues coming in for the year. So we'll see what happens, but we have some exposure relative to these overall trigger cuts. Clearly, the majority of the exposure, especially as you get to that second level of trigger cuts, is within the education system.
And you see that our board sits on a lot of other different boards and commissions, and I can see where some of that will have effects on, for example, the transportation to schools, that we sit on the Transportation Commission, they're getting more transit money, so we may be looking in those. So it's good to see it more than just what it will affect our county.
Right. It goes across the board. And anything that affects, a lot of these other programs that may not be directly impacting the county, may impact the county in other ways due to, you know, the services we provide for the schools are expansive, so there could be issues in that regard also.
Hey, Paul, can we, is $654 million, is that through what date?
I think it was through September.
That's what I saw.
Yeah, that's the latest number we had from our analyst and from the state controller.
Okay.
When we were at your board at the end of the third quarter, we made a projection at what we thought our fund balance was going to be, and we used that number for our budget projection and our budget, final budget. The balance, and what we ended up with, let me just start from scratch. At 7-1 of last year, of 10, our designation for subsequent year financing was a little over $81 million. We made a projection that we thought we were going to break even for the year. So we projected, at the end of Accounting Period 9, which is, you know, as of March, we projected that we would be about breakeven position, about $81 million. So that, we thought that as of 7-1-11, our number would be equivalent to 7-1 of 10, if that makes sense. So we were projecting a breakeven year for the, for last fiscal year. Again, we're talking about last fiscal year numbers. What we ended up with was about $88.6 million. And what I'm going to try to do here is explain what the difference is and why we were off on our projection at Accounting Period 9. Again, this was our projection at Accounting Period 9. There was a number of things that happened after that that play into this, and there's a lot of pluses and minuses throughout the entire budget. I mean, we're talking about an $875 million budget, so there's a lot of ups and downs and pluses and minuses. But when we get down to the bare essentials, these are the primary movers of that $7.4 million. Actually, this is a good news scenario, because we ended up with a $7.4 million increase in our designation for subsequent year financing or fund balance numbers. Of that numbers, we transferred from the attrition mitigation designation to cover some payroll increases in the salary, in the Sheriff's Department, about $910,000. We transferred from this designation for mitigation, attrition mitigation into the Sheriff's Department, because they were over their budget as far as their salaries and employee benefits. So we moved, basically, it's a financing source that we had not projected in the general fund at that time. We also transferred from our healthcare designation $870,000 to cover our shortage in the tobacco settlement funds that we had budgeted for. So to maintain those programs in the tobacco program, we came to your board, and actually, we came to your board in the end of June, on June 28th, and made those two final adjustments. Your board approved those adjustments, moving them from the designations back into the general fund to cover appropriations in the general fund. So those two items were unanticipated at the time we did our projection. Unspent contingency, that's $900,000. We started our year at $2 million in contingency. When we do our projection at the Accounting Period 9, we assume that we're going to spend that contingency for the entire year. It was about $900,000 at the time. We just projected we're going to spend it. It ended up not being spent, so that was $900,000. We got some election equipment reimbursement from the state. We had, we didn't know when that was coming, actually, but we did get it last year. And so we had not accrued that money, we had not expected that money, but it did come in before the year-end, and therefore, it's about $1,002,000 extra of revenue that we brought in last year. Buy-down termination, that is our pay-down for vacation buyout. It was about $1.4 million under what we had projected. We had projected about a little over $13 million, and it was in the 11 and 1/2 range, roughly. So that is about $1,004 of the number. And then we had some prior-year VLF excess revenue come in, and that is, in a nutshell, the state was sitting on $1.4 million of our money that had been accrued for four years prior from vehicle license fees that were generally allocated to Health and Human Services realignment programs. But this is some penalty fees that they had collected that was in excess of a certain dollar amount, so it comes to the general fund as one big chunk of money. Generally, it should come every year, about $350,000 years is what we got last year, but that came all at once, and it made up for four years that the state was sitting on. By the way, just as a side note, the state is also still sitting on about 20, over $20 million of our money from SB 90-backed claims. So that's an IOU that we're still hoping to see, but it's not anywhere recorded in these numbers.
How many years have we been hoping to see that?
I think probably longer than you've been on the board, but we are still, it's out there, and it's an IOU from the state, and if they ever do make things right, they owe us over $20 million. So that's good news. The last thing is an accounting transaction, Santa Paula Waterworks, a long-term loan that was outstanding. They paid us, paid us back, and it's just really an accounting transfer from one reserve to the unreserved fund balance. So it's really just an accounting transaction. So these numbers add up to the $7.4 million, and in essence, that's, the good news is that our designation did increase from last year to this year, and the majority of it is one-time. There are some ongoing revenue, cost reductions that we've actually included in this year's budget, including the buy-down termination. We, once we found out those numbers, we adjusted those downwards at part of our final budget hearings, if I recall. And so we've already anticipated those. The excess prior-year VLF realignment, we call that one-time. Whether or not we get $350,000 again this year, we may, but we'll have to wait and see on that one. That would, we'd just bring it in as it would come.
Some of these, I'm sorry, while they say unanticipated, they had to be anticipated, it's just a matter of when. And so, for example, the election equipment reimbursement, had we thought it would be coming like a year further down, or?
That's exactly. We weren't exactly sure when it was going to be coming, but it was one-time revenue because we had basically spent the money in front of it, so to speak, and then we knew we were going to get it back. We just didn't know when. And we actually took money out of the designations to pay for the money, pay for these items at the time, and we knew we were going to get it back and get reimbursed. We're just not sure quite when.
Okay.
Yes, just real quick, and to point out a couple things. So first, for Paul's team here, their projection was pretty darn good, less than 1% off, when you look at an $872 million budget. So I think that's very positive. Also, it was off in the positive direction, so very conservative projection. Yeah, so that's good for the team. But also, as Mr. Dursey said, these are largely one-time accruals, generations of funds here, and so now they go into the designation for subsequent year financing, which is another word for the reserve. So these are in reserve, and that would be our recommendation that they stay there and add and help to build up the reserve.
And thank you for that beautiful statement. Paul, you can go back.
Have we had this kind of presentation in the past?
No. Your board requested something like this to reconcile that whole year ending.
So I'd just like to compliment you and compliment the CEO for giving us this update, because I think this has always been a little bit of a mystery to us, what happened to us at the end. And just so I can be clear, so we had an increase of $7.4 million, and then you've itemized what those increases are from all of this. So did we have, did all departments just spend down all of their money?
Generally speaking, no. What we do, what we have, what we have is some departments that are over budget, some departments that are under budget, some, you know, some revenues don't come in as expected, some revenues come in more than expected, so it kind of conglomerates into this $875 million budget. So some departments are over, some departments are under. At Accounting Period 9, we thought, in general, the under expenditures in some departments will make up for the shortage in revenue in other departments and those types of things. So as a whole, we thought we would be balanced.
And were we?
Yes, we were. We're actually overbalanced, and due to these, primarily due to these items. But if these items weren't there, generally speaking, every year, we do have some one-time things come in at the end that we do not anticipate.
So this includes departments, some departments that were over, others that were under.
That's correct.
That's all been washed through, and now we're down.
That is correct.
Okay.
And that comes back to our, this is our famous chart on our designation for the subsequent year financing. Your board has seen a number of times, back in 2001, too, we were below zero. Right now, we're just a little over 10%, which I think is a very, very good number, very commendable number from our standpoint, especially in light of all the economic circumstances going across the last several years. I think that our county is really to be commended for, in a very struggling time, to have that number just maintain, not only maintain, but actually tick up a little bit. So the pure dollars are about, like I think the previous slide showed, about 88, a little over $88 million, 88.6 million, I believe. So that's the designation for subsequent year financing, and overall, I think we're, I think the goal is the yellow line up there at the 15%, and that's, again, that's the GFOA recommended number, about two months' worth of expenditures. And that's kind of, what they said is kind of their minimum, but I think that would be, I think that's generally a pretty solid number, and that's for two months' expenditures is about the right.
So what is the number there?
About 10.2%.
10.2?
10.2, yeah. This is just a pretty chart of our Prop 172 revenue. If you go through all the different colors, the '09 is what we received in '09. You see, if you start in September, the green, '09, it was really high, because that was still before the recession, and then all of a sudden, the green just kind of drops down. And if you look at August for '09, it's way down below anything else. So it just tanked during those years, during '09 at the end. Our total amount that we brought in was about $51 million in '09. Then you just go across there. '10 was even a worse year. It was about $48 million overall, and you see, that's the red one going across. It's just not a good, not a good year overall from a financial standpoint. If you look at February, February is the one that peaks, and February is the one where the Christmas sales come into play. So every year, the February one, a little bit higher than everything else. But the FY 11 is the kind of light blue on the, in the middle there. That is, total for last year was about a little over $51 million, and again, we had budgeted about $54 million. So this, again, kind of gets, you know, washed into the big pot of county revenues. Those were a little bit revenue short, some of the other revenues were a little over, so in overall, we were in a positive position. But if you look at the yellow one, that's what we took our $54 million budget and kind of spread that across the months. And that spread across the month on a proportional basis relative to prior year. So whatever happened in prior years, we kind of assumed that same spread of revenue for the budget year. And what we've seen so far, our year-to-date numbers are the dark blue there on the right of this column, and we only have two months' worth, September and October so far. But you see, they're just a little, little bit under our budget numbers. So right now, we're projecting, again, probably in the $52 million range for $52 to $53 million in the Prop 172 revenue, a little bit under our budget number if we had to project forward at this time. Not significant as we are looking forward, looking ahead, and we would expect those numbers to maintain relative, relatively close to those budget numbers as we go forward. Again, we're not, we can't predict the economy, but we have to try to come up with good numbers that we think we can justify and move forward with.
And for the listening public, Prop 172 revenue, our revenues that go to our public safety.
That is correct. Sales tax-based revenue, half-cent sales tax-based revenue that go to our public safety department's district. Thank you.
So go stop.
Yes. There is a little bit of exposure from our standpoint also. I think, as noted before in presentations, there's two aspects to the Prop 172 revenue. One is the statewide pool, how much they're actually collecting in property tax, in sales tax, and then our proportional share relative to the state's proportional share. What we've seen so far is our proportional share is down a little bit, not significant, but probably about a half a million dollars' worth. So if the numbers come in, our proportional share come in as we project them to, we're going to lose about a half a million dollars from our proportional share relative to 172 money. The, that is done, I believe, in November timeframe, November, December, the state will give us the information relative to our proportional share, and we'll make adjustments accordingly. Hopefully, it'll be up, but so far, the first two quarters of, it's based on the prior year. So far, the first two quarters of last year, the numbers are a little bit less than what we had the previous year. Here's our retirement contributions. These are all, these numbers are all going, except for the 11-12, everything else is going forward. And these numbers are our best guess of what we think that the retirement contributions will be. Right now, they're in the process of doing the actuarial evaluation as of June 30th of '11. So all these numbers are not based on any actuarial information, except for the 11-12, which is our actual contributions for this fiscal year. So everything else is projected, starting in '12, '13, based on our analysis of what the returns were for last year, which is good news. The retirement system had a return of 24% in their portfolio, which is really good news, and really does help offset the prior year's losses from a couple of years ago. And that will help smooth out the payments as we go forward. If you recall last year...
This is a really big question, I'm sure, but what accounts for that 24%? Basically?
What accounts for that 24%?
The 20% increase over what was expected in the retirement?
That's really retirement earnings in their retirement portfolio that they invest in the stock market, the bonds, and all that stuff.
So the, the main basis for it is that the stock market...
So far, the first two quarters of last year, the numbers are a little bit less than what we had the previous year. Here's our retirement contributions. These are all, these numbers are all going, except for the 11, 12, everything else is going forward. And these numbers are our best guess of what we think that the retirement contributions will be. Right now, they're in the process of doing the actuarial evaluation as of June 30 of '11. So all these numbers are not based on any actuarial information, except for the 11, 12, which is our actual contributions for this fiscal year. So everything else is projected, starting in '12, '13, based on our analysis of what the returns were for last year, which is good news. The retirement system had a return of 24% in their portfolio, which is really good news and really does help offset the prior year's losses from a couple of years ago. And that will help smooth out the payments as we go forward. If you recall last year...
This is a really big question, I'm sure, but what accounts for that 24% basically?
What accounts for that 24%?
The 20% increase over what was expected in the retirement?
That's really retirement earnings in their retirement portfolio that they invest in the stock market, the bonds, and all that stuff.
So the main basis for it is that the stock market went up, for example?
Yes, the stock market went up, correct. Yeah, because I think about two-thirds of their dollars are in stocks, and about a third are in bonds, roughly speaking. So as the stock market recovers, their returns will be. For example, this year, I think through September, they were down 10%. Now, October was a good month. So whether they're break-even for this fiscal year or not, I couldn't tell you yet, but those kind of numbers will be, we track those on a monthly basis because of the significant impact relative to our costs and our county contributions. And we roll them into our numbers and try to project, project forward. But the good news is that we do know that last year's returns were 24%, and those are the numbers that will be locked in going for this upcoming actuarial evaluation.
But just to be as clear as possible, the 24% was what the total return on the portfolio was.
That's correct.
But we needed 8% just to be equal to it, so it's really a 16%.
16, over the assumed...
Over and out of the...
That's correct.
The 16% will be spread over a five-year period of smoothing.
That's correct.
Right, which I noticed in your numbers, even your worst-case scenario is only about 200 million, where if we were to look at this two years ago, we would have been probably closer to 300 million.
Absolutely right. Absolutely right.
So it goes up really fast and it goes down really fast?
Well, and part of the idea, the smoothing, yes, smoothing is trying to make it so it's not as volatile, but the market has been so volatile that it's really made it go up and down a lot faster. I think when you look at some of the data, we're expecting, right now, the UAL, the Unamortized Actuarial, is $761 million. But as that's smoothed out through the process, we expect that to be closer to 950 million. That number, so that number will go up another $200 million. And that $200 million has to be amortized over a 15-year period, according to their policy, and that's what's going to hit, and that's why the numbers continue to go up for a number of years. When we look at some of the other, I think what we're going to see, the good news is that what we're going to see is that the market value of the assets will be, will be a lot closer to the actuarial value of assets. In the past, they were about almost, almost a billion, $865 million. What they used to value the system was less than the market value by $865 million. So that's what has to smooth its way through the system. Now, we're projecting at this point in time that this year-end, we'll see a lot closer number, almost balanced, from that standpoint. But that doesn't take care of the unamortized accrued actuarial liability, because that still has to work its way over the 15-year period. But at least we're going in the positive direction at this point in time.
Go ahead, let me ask you a question before we move on, unless you have something else here.
No.
We have some future possibilities of high risk with the program in regards to, as we saw, CalPERS had come back and said that they will not be able to meet their 7 and 3/4% estimate, and they haven't met it in years, and that may change, there may be pressure. That change for us is a big deal. You want to explain maybe a little bit of that? So we also know going forward, if the market continues, that's good for us, but if there's issues that come back and say, well, you can't use your 8% returns, at some point, it's going to have some effect on us.
Sure, right now, we're using an 8% assumed return rate on the assets.
Right.
For about every quarter percent reduction, if the retirement board decides they want to go to 7 and 3/4, we expect that to be about 2% to 2.5% increase in our costs. So if we're on the 2, 2.5% increase in the actual, the rate, not our cost, but the rate itself, which is on a $600 million basis, 2.5% of $600 million is in the $15 million range or $18 million range. So it's significant relative to every quarter percent drop.
Right, and I think that's the pressure issue that we're all dealing with here, is that if all of a sudden, there's that pressure, and we have pressure from two sides. We're saying, let's look and see what the market does, let's don't artificially bring ourselves in that position. But you've got other sides, you've got the labor groups who say that's part of our roll-ups, we'd rather see you do it, bring it down, because it adds to our, but on the other side, if we drop this at 1% to 7%, it costs us, what, $50 million or $65 million?
Yeah, $60 million.
$60 million, right off one year, to $60 million more. So there's a lot of pressure out there, but I notice that that's being difficult. And how many, if we can have a couple more good years in the market, maybe that pressure will start to ease a little bit.
I think it would start to abate. I think on the, a counter to that a little bit is that, right now, our five-year smoothing period is on the short end, and so that's, that's good. I mean, that is, you know, if you don't make your 8% return, you're smoothing over a shorter period. And also, the amortization of the unfunded liability is on the short end at 15 years. So that's also, if you look at CalPERS, I think they have a 15-year smoothing period and a 30-year amortization on their unfunded, they're not even paying the principal.
It's like paying interest only on the sub forever.
Yeah, they'll be paying forever. So that's kind of counterbalances a bit, the fact that we have a little bit higher interest rate, because we do, we do smooth it through the system a lot quicker. And you see, in here, it's four years of quite a bit of pain, and then you smooth out, and there, going forward, you have a little bit better situation.
Right, right. So it is much more fiscally conservative to do what your board is doing, which is to pay it off earlier. The other point I would add to that is that over the last 20 years or so, the retirement fund has earned about 8%.
Yeah, I think we've been better than what you saw at CalPERS, and what you just said is that if we have this debt, we just decide, we're going to pay it off quicker. We're not going to leave it, because a lot of other counties and states could just say, well, we have a lot more money, because we're smoothing over 15 years. You can do other programs, other things, but then you still have that 15 years worth of that debt.
Right.
And we've said, you know, we've already been through what, a couple of years, we're getting close to paying that off in about a year and a half, two years, so, yeah, that's good.
And smoothing for the public's sake is averaging, right?
It's basically averaging, yes.
Basically, as an average, so.
Taking the ups and downs and trying to smooth, yeah, average it out over a five-year period and try not to make, you know, if you have to mark to market every year, one year you lose 15%, your contribution could go up by $100 million, and you don't want that to happen.
But over the five years, you can average it, it's called smoothing, so.
And just one more point, before you mentioned the sort of the change in the long-term cost projection, and what your board heard from our office last year was that this year was going to be about 25 million and next year 30. Well, this year's more like 12, and next year's about 18 million. So still very significant, but, but it's much better.
Significantly less.
Significantly less, and of course, there's a lot of reasons for that, but some of those reasons are, your board has taken very strong fiscal action in terms of retirement costs, the Tier Two, the no 3% at 50, also having all county employees dedicate 3% of their salaries. That lowers that overall compensation cost against which the formula is applied, so that brings those projected numbers down. So all those things are having a good impact.
Couple of caveats here. These assumptions, these projections assume an 8% return going forward, whether or not we hit that number or not. As the 8%, if we don't hit 8%, those numbers obviously would go up and down. And it also assumes for this year, a 6% increase in our liability, and going forward, an 8% increase in our liability. Now, if we end up with, last year, our increase in our liability was around 6%, so we used that same number. Prior years, it would fluctuate between, you know, 6% and 9%. If it comes in at 8%, our contribution would end up being in the, probably the $24 million range. It would go up probably about $3.5 million per percent on the liability side, because that's, as your liability grows, you have to pay that number off. It expands your, the difference between your assets and your liability, and you have to pay down those numbers. So those are just, but going forward, it does balance out, it does smooth out. If you look at the blue line, that's the percent, the contribution rate percentage, it actually does come down. Theoretically, it'll come down over a long period of time to the, what we call normal cost, because you would have paid off all of your unfunded liability. If you continue to make 8%, eventually you'll come back and pay off all of your unfunded liability, and you'll be just paying your normal cost.
If I could ask, you're going all the way up to 2021, as your estimate's out there. This also assumes, we haven't changed salaries, haven't changed anything during that, is that what it's, what assumption?
The salary increases in our actuarial go with the actuarial assumptions of 4% increase in salaries. But that's, that is the, that's why, that's basically why that green bar will continue to go up. But the percentages, and the reason we didn't change that to what we think they're going to actually be, is because when you get to percentages, if you, it's that numerator-denominator thing, is that when you have a percentage, if you have a lower overall salary, you have to amortize your unfunded liability over, your unfunded liability percentage is going to go up. So we either can bring down our salaries and our actuarial liability will go up, I mean, excuse me, our percentage of unfunded liability percent to cover the actuarial liability will go up, and our salaries will go down, but in all, in overall, it won't make a significant impact relative to the overall contribution, because you still have to pay off that unfunded liability. The rate will go up if you're paying it over a smaller base, right?
Right, okay. Tell me to get in the weeds on some of that.
Good questions.
And then just to touch on these areas here, so 36-32 mandate for mental health services for school kids. The good news there, as we, as you recall, was that the state shifted that mandate to the schools, and that's about a $3 million positive impact to our social service department. So that's very good. There's also the ITSD rate reduction, which we discussed with your board about two weeks ago, so that's about 600,000 county-wide reduction in telecom rates. Property tax CPI, that's actually, we're looking for next year, that that going up to about 2%. That's, but at the same time, want to be very clear that the assessed value, we're still going to project that as flat, so for this year and next year. The mail-in voting reimbursement, that has been suspended by the state, as you know, and that could have a fiscal impact to the recorder's office of about 300,000 to 450,000, and we're working with Mr. Lahn on that to help address that. Public safety realignment...
Could you elaborate a little bit on that? Is the state not wanting to reimburse the cost for mail-in ballots?
Pretty much, that's it.
And it seems low, only 300,000?
Well, 300,000 to 450,000, yeah. We're going to evaluate that.
But isn't that the primary way people are voting now, is by mail?
It's about 50?
Yeah, it's about half.
I'm not thinking that elections are about, okay.
No, good, that's good. Public safety realignment, we've touched on that, and just one note on that, there's an issue about funding going forward in out years, and it's our understanding, yes, it's a significant issue. The funding is appropriated, it's going to be an annual continuing appropriation. What's not clear is the allocation formula, and that's very important. So that's something that's being worked on right now with the governor, and that's where he's trying to push, and CSAC and others are, in counties and cities, a constitutional amendment to protect the funding for safety realignment going forward. So that is something that's going on as we speak at the state level. Aura funding, the stimulus funding, just to touch on that in general, really want to compliment county managers and departments, because pretty much, as your board heard, this funding was going to run out, so we had, they had to manage their projects in a way that reflected that. And by and large, they did that. That's not an easy thing to do, but it's an easy thing to talk about, it's a tougher thing to do, but they've done that. And so really, kudos to the managers for doing that. There are two programs that your board's been made aware of, that we are looking at, you know, going forward. One is the Rapid Rehousing Program for homeless. That has been a very successful program, and that's something that we're looking at. Are there other resources for continuing that program, as well as the Mortgage Fraud Program that your board heard about recently? And then lastly, is the governor's 12-point pension reform plan, which has been referred to, and our office is still evaluating that. A couple of just quick points about that. One is that it actually proposes a couple of measures that your board has already adopted, including going longer, greater years in terms of your final year of compensation from one to three, employee sharing in the cost of retirement. And so a lot of the things that your board has already put forth, there could be some concerns in terms of that employee sharing part of it, that we're going to need to iron out, but it's still in flux. We're looking at it, I think it's still in flux at the state level as well, so we'll keep an eye on that.
I just wanted to comment on that at the time. You know, when we rolled out our pension reform plan, one of the things we specifically requested was that, or recommended was that it was far better for it to come from the state, so that it applies to everybody across the board, you don't have entities competing with each other in terms of their pension plans and benefits that are out there. So I welcome this, and I think that's part of why we said, look, we don't have any major contracts coming up. Let's take our time, let's see what the state does, let's combine that with our efforts. And so I think this is helpful. It'll still be a little bit of a challenge to see what the state legislature does with the proposals, but we have, we still have time. We have more than a year before our major contracts come up. So I think it's very possible that, you know, we can see what, where the state is, and then see if there's anything that we need to do to fine-tune after that. But this is, I think, the common sense approach, so take your time, see what the state does, and see what you're in a complement with. Thank you.
When you say see what the state does, to see in terms of how it will affect us, or to see how effective what they're doing is?
How it will affect us. In other words, the state is going to make some changes that will change what we can and cannot do in terms of pensions here. And to the extent that the state's done that, then it's not an item that we end up needing to negotiate with our unions.
Okay, so where do we look at, going forward, where does the county, where do we see ourselves? If you want to just take the very next page, maybe use that as a cheat sheet, that has our major assumptions on it also, the next page. So if you want to look up at the chart here, and the major assumptions are listed on the next page. But our projection as we go forward, we're, if we had to say what our budget's going to look like as of next June, we would say we have about a $5 million net county cost nut to crack, okay? That's what we, at this point in time, that's what we're looking at. And then subsequent year 10, and then 8. And out in the out years, based on the assumptions that we have, as the, and see, if you'd noticed, this really does coincide with the retirement contributions going down. And that's where, that's where we really see a crossover out in '15, '16, as retirement contributions go down significantly, that we're going to see some positive, that's actually positive, when the red gets below the blue, we've seen a positive outlook in the out years. But right now, we're looking at about a $5 million issue, but there are so many assumptions involved with these numbers that, if you, I think some of the key ones is that no COLA adjustments to salaries at all during this whole time period, okay? We assume that about, roughly speaking, about 1% of your sal, there's a 1% salary increase just due to merit increases, and we've assumed that in these numbers, but no COLA adjustments during the entire time. So if you're looking, again, at a $600 million payroll, you can see what a 1% COLA adjustment would do to these numbers. That's just, just information. We assume that there's a 2% property tax increase for next year, '12, '13, and then going forward, I think it's 3.5, and then 5.5 in the out year. So whether or not that's significant, you know, we're trying, again, base it on historical data. Historically, when we've run into trenches from the property tax standpoint, they usually come back way, way beyond where they had dipped. But overall, the last 30 years or so, it's about been around 5.5%. So those are the numbers we use for our out years in the property taxes. We don't think we're going to get to the 5.5% next year or the year after, but I think eventually, we will eventually get there.
So this is 2% out?
This is 2% for that, see that $5 million? We're assuming a 2% increase in our property tax revenue for that year. And then 3.5% in the next year, and then, yeah, 5.5 from there on out. So even in the 5.5 year, the first year, the $8 million, that $8 million deficit, it has a 5.5% property tax increase assumed in it. So if we don't make that, obviously, that number comes down. If we give salary increases, the deficit goes up. So there's a lot of factors involved, but this gives us a good basis, based on, you know, these assumptions, and as you adjust the assumptions, and these assumptions don't come true, we know where we actually are eventually, but...
And what's your assumption on the 1% of property tax equals what? So if you say it's going up 2% next year?
It's a little over $2.5 million.
So every 1% is about $2.5 million?
Yes.
Okay, so you're assuming about $5 million?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay.
The retirement cost increases, which, again, are the driver on this whole thing, as far as the overall cost, as they go down in those out years, we're actually in a little bit of a, we would consider to be a surplus position based on these assumptions. And then charges, federal and state revenue coming in proportionally to what our costs are increasing. So if our, not exactly, but proportionally, but in general, the federal government will pay us their 50% share on most of the programs as our costs go up. If our retirement costs go up, they'll pay, they'll generally cover 50% of that share. So depending on the program, but in general. So we make some general assumptions, and that is one of them. And our debt service is assuming that all the things in our, what we provided Schedule C, as part of our board... C, if, as our, part of our board, your preliminary board letter, Schedule C to the board letter, those items, which primarily are there, our payroll system, our tax system, and our accounting system. I think those are the three major items that are, that are included as going out in those out years. So the debt service does go up a little bit over those years, but it's based on those, those items in that Schedule C. And I think, see, Prop 172 revenue increase and the other revenue increase, between 2% and 3% going in the out year. So whether or not, generally speaking, we're thinking it's going to be a relatively low inflation period. I mean, but again, I think when we look at the numbers, if our costs go up, if our services applies costs go up by, by the inflationary amount, generally speaking, we'll see that some revenues will come, increase by that inflationary amount also, so it does offset somewhat. So these are the basis that we've established for our projection, and you see that we're not in a horrendous position. I think we do still have some issues internally, but I think we are on a good, you know, solid basis relative to what we, what we see going forward, so.
And so just in summary, as you've heard, we're on the positive side, we're going to add to the reserves, we're watching the state trigger cuts. Retirement costs have come down in projection, but they are still certainly significant, and your board's taken many actions to address that. We're going to return to your board in either December or January to have a capital projects discussion, really a thorough discussion on all the major projects out there for the county, and look at our annual debt service. And then also, in mid-year, our report is going to include a report on the performance measures that we adopted as part of the budget, and we'll have a better look at that. So just in, overall, in summary, there's tough times, but, and we're watching going forward, but overall, your county departments are managing very well.
Michael, on the state trigger cuts and the concerns, the $654 million that you talked about before, there was an estimate, economic forecast, when do we have another forecast from the state? Because they're showing a $654 million less than projected.
Yeah, generally, they come out once a month, so I would imagine we'll see October sometime in the first couple of weeks of, of this, this month.
We're going to see how we're doing.
Right. And we will know our CPI number also, because they base that on the CPI relative to our property tax number, we'll know that in the month of November also, because they base that on, on the month of October, on the statewide CPI.
So they do it on a monthly basis, and then we find out a month later?
That's correct. And then we should know our actuarial number sometime in December, I would guess.
December also.
When you mention performance measures, you mean the strategic plan that we did? Do you think you'll incorporate that into the budget too, into the budget document?
Yes, that is exactly the idea, so that we're not duplicating measures, sort of one common set of measures in the strategic plan and the budget, yes.
Mike, if I can ask you or Paul, going into our next budget year, which we're going to start working on in about, what, four months, three or four months? We got, we show a $5 million deficit. What are we going to do to try to make that up? Do we, we have any plans, are we going to start thinking through that process, or anything?
Do what we do.
I'll leave that to the big guys.
Yeah, thanks.
I know I'm putting you on the spot, but I...
No, no, absolutely.
Part of what you talk about is this long-term planning, that start to think so, it's just not all of a sudden hits, it's people are, where are we going, how are we going to look to try to make those...
Right, and so what happens is, is Paul and his team meet with each department, and we meet early to identify those cost drivers and ways of starting to reduce those costs now, because the sooner we do it, the easier it's going to be to deal with it next fiscal year. So that process, really, in some ways, is almost year-round, and it's ongoing right now. And then looking for revenue opportunities wherever we can, that is just constant and relentless, and then, so that's Paul's team, and then, of course, all the department heads looking at innovative ways of improving services in their department, and Catherine Rodriguez and her effort to continue to lower, you know, overhead costs in the counties, all those factors come into play.
Right, I know you've done a tremendous job. We saw the percent decreases in GSA and a few, we found some of those to work, and appreciate that, and we're just going to continue down that path. But there's nothing major we're looking at, we're going to have to cut something out right now, we haven't got to that point, where if all of a sudden that was a $20 million, then all of a sudden you're going to see something.
That's correct.
That's right, yeah, I mean, those kind of things, and so, okay. I just think it's important that we know that we're still tracking down, we've got to find $5 million someplace, and based on all these assumptions coming true. If they're not true, and it goes up the other way, that'll be a little bit easier on us, but I think the idea is that we're not seeing the economy boom, so got to make the assumption we're going to be $5 million short.
Right. Well, then you can also look at that if you were to look three years ago, and if all the lean six projects and so forth weren't done, because that million annually for those three years, so...
Yeah, and, and that's really...
That's why, that's why it's manageable right now.
Exactly, that's why I say, that's where I think where it's coming from, is that we're not on a, a deal, we've, we've done all that, now we can sit back. We've got to continue that process, because $5 million, then you've got $10 million, then you've got $8 million, making the assumptions that if we don't get the property tax increase of 2.5%, instead of 10, it could be 12, 14, 15. So we've got to take those continual, and I think that's what everybody in the, the public is asking us to do, how do we get more effective, more efficient, still provide services at the highest levels possible with the good people that are doing it, so...
Exactly. And no one is resting on their laurels.
Yeah, that's great.
And we're basing it on very conservative revenue projections as well.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's smart for us to do, and I appreciate the hard work going into all this, thank you.
And Madam Chair, too, you know, that budget's a roadmap, and I think we have a good roadmap that we're following, and, and thank all the agencies for doing their part, and, and it's a good presentation, it's a good picture, good picture on, on, for our future. Thank you.
Just, if I might, I think the, one, I appreciate the information, and I think the things that are surrounding us, that will have an impact on us, are some unknowns also. The state, the court system, the impacts on the sheriff's services, obviously, all the things that are yet unknown about long-term 109, AB 109, all of that, so. It's, it's a very conservative picture, it's a very, I think, solid fiscal stability at this point, but doesn't take much.
And do appreciate the, as Supervisor Garcia said, the roadmap, that we, we see what's coming in January, December, January kind of decisions that we'll be looking at, and then also get, get ready for the budget well in advance, so appreciate that. We have a motion to receive and file, if we could all please vote.
And that's happening unanimously, and looking after the full session, I think I'll be participating in the announcement for the full session, so we'll just go ahead and adjourn.